Great, so I think we can go ahead and get started. And then if people jump on, then that's their business. Um, great, so. Uh, I am Sierra Palasar and I am the one of the co-hosts, co-president and co-host, co-president of the Emerging Museum Professional Network. And I want to welcome everybody to our second town hall. We're really excited to kind of start making this a more regular occurrence. We love hearing feedback from everybody and really just getting a lot of fresh ideas and very exciting. So I wanted to first start off with some just basic introductions. I'm not sure if everybody on this call was on our last town hall. I see a couple of familiar faces, but a couple of new people as well. So, uh, but since the last town hall that we've had, we have had all new board, board members and new leadership team assignments. Basically, uh, we've gone through like a pretty big rebrand and building up our board after it had shrunk significantly. So, um, I think that just for our board members will go ahead and introduce themselves and then, um, we can get down to the nitty gritty. So like I said, my name is Sierra Palasar and I'm one of the co-interim presidents. Outside of the national EMP, I am also in a chapter chair of New Orleans EMP group. I am not from New Orleans, but I do live here. I'm the registrar at Tulane University, their art collection. And originally from Maryland. And yeah, that's what I'm going to say about myself and I'll pass it on to the next person. Let's see, well, actually, can you go to the next slide, Emily? Yeah, so Sierra Van Rikdegrude is our other co-president. We are both Sierras, we are referred to as the Sierras. Our email is the same email, president@nepnetwork.org. Sierra is unable to make it today, so I'm just gonna give her a little brief introduction. But she, we, like I said, we both share an email, so we are very accessible, very easy to reach. We like to hear directly from people. And let's, yeah, Chloe, you wanna introduce yourself next?
Yeah, I'm Chloe, my pronouns are she and her. And I am the interim treasurer for National EMP, which has been a ton of fun. I have been on the board, um, gosh, I guess for like a year. I don't know, was it a year now, Sierra? I can't remember, maybe a little more than that. And so it's been exciting to kind of take on this new role. Really excited to hear more from you all about what, what kind of, what changes you'd like to see and what that's gonna look like. I live in Idaho. It is cold here. Sorry, I had to put my jacket on. And I am the Director of Programs and Engagement at the Museum of Idaho, in Idaho Falls, southeastern Idaho. So anyway, happy to be here, thanks for all being here. Laura, your picture's next.
Oh, okay. Um, I'm Laura Santoyo. Um, I am the current interim secretary. And I help manage the Facebook page with Chloe. And I, and I also plan to be a committee member on the advocacy committee. So I'm looking forward to that and working with everybody. Um, my regular job, you know, when I'm not doing stuff for NEMPN, I am the curator of collections for a small academic art museum in the Chicagoland area. We have a large Native American art collection looking to expand into just American art. And I also teach part-time as well. Um, who hasn't gone yet?
Oh, well, so the next person on the list is Michelle Reynolds.
Oh, yeah.
She's not here with us today. She's been taking a leave of absence. She's a family member with COVID, but she's our director of resources. So she's gonna be really the point person on building our resource page on the website and helping disseminate kind of crowdsourced information as it comes in. And she's also the committee chair on the theory and practice, which we'll talk a little bit about coming up. And then next is Emily.
Hi, I'm Emily Esten. I use she/her pronouns. I am in Philadelphia where it is the first snow of the season right now, so it's very exciting. Um, I'm the Director of Communications, which means I help manage the website, the social media and our upcoming newsletter content, making sure you get all the great information like finding out about today's town hall. And my day job is working at the University of Pennsylvania Libraries where I help think about the special collections as a source for digital scholarship projects. So moving into the collections as data movement. And and that's the next one. So is Cassandra here?
I don't think so. Cassandra is our, one of our regional directors. We're gonna talk about those in a little bit, but she's for the Southeast region. She's also, I think, missing today's town hall, but she did prepare some slides that we will go over and talk a little bit about her role in the advocacy committee. Yep, oh, and we have another missing person. There's Kelsey Bro. She's another regional director and she's for the Northeast region. And Kelsey's in New York, I believe. Madeline, you're up.
I guess that's me. My chat box is currently blocking myself, so thank you so much, Sierra. Hi, everybody, my name is Madeline Smolars. My pronouns are she/her. And I am a mad queer disabled person living in Kingston, Ontario, Canada. So of all the folks in this call, I think I might be the only Canadian. I promise I won't say A too many times. By day, I am a museum assistant full-time for a municipality working at three different locations, two museums and a national historic site. By night, slash in my non-working hours, I am Chair of the Group of Ontario Emerging Museum Professionals Committee in Ontario. And as well, I am the international multi-location regional director for NEMPN. So, oh my goodness, there is another Canadian, yay, Heather in Jasper, Alberta. That's beautiful, I've been where you are and it is beautiful. So bravo for living in Jasper. And I think I will pass it over to Diane next, who looks to be next on my screen.
Hi, I'm Diane Choi. My pronouns are she/her. I'm the regional director for the Midwest. I'm located in Milwaukee and I see our Milwaukee Chapter EMP leader Danielle is here. Hi Danielle, thanks for coming. I work at the Milwaukee Art Museum. I'm in the Education Department and Youth and Family Programs. And I'm also gonna be talking a little bit later about our community committee. So look to hear more about that in a little bit. And it's over to Jessie next.
Hey, everyone, I'm Jessie. I also use she/her pronouns. I'm in California, so there's no snow here. I am the Regional Director for the Western Region for NEMPN. And in my, my day job or my background is in collections management and exhibitions as a preparator and registrar in a past life. And now I work for a company that builds collections management systems. So still museum world. But as a, as the Regional Director for NEMPN, I've been reaching out to a lot of you folks in our Western Chapters and trying to share some resources. And I see there's a few of you here today, which is really exciting to maybe get to chat further. So I'll pass it over to Amy.
Hi, thanks Jessie. I'm Amy, I'm the Regional Director for Southwest Region. I live in a place called Rio Rico, Arizona. You've never heard of it, that's okay. I, in my day job, I am the Visitor and Science Center Manager for the Smithsonian Institution's Astrophysical Observatory. And I'll bet you also didn't know the Smithsonian had a location in the middle of nowhere in the desert.
Now they all know. All right, so I would love, before we jump into the slides, I'm trying to get every, get this onto group view because I would like to kind of see like, I guess, a show of hands of everyone here. Who is a chapter leader or a member of the chapter leadership? Who is a regular, just EMP member? Just to kind of get a sense of, of who's joining us. I don't know how easy that is. You can use the little wavy hand Zoom guy. Chapter leaders, chapter leaders out there. Couple, a couple, okay, so just some general EMP members of the community. Okay, so nice mix of both, that's great. So, um, oh my goodness. I'm bad at Zooming, y'all. Okay, there we go. Um, so what we're gonna do is, for the first slides, is just talk about our committees. So committees is kind of, it's not new for EMP, but we're doing a big reboot as we're building the board and doing a big reboot in general. So the idea of our committees is small groups. Each committee is chaired by an EMP board member, but anybody who is an EMP member can sit on a board. And the idea for us is really to kind of extend this town hall type of communal decision-making, but focus them onto the kind of national conversations that we're having as an organization. So we have these five committees. The advocacy committee, communications, community, which is really a kind of a resource building, finance, and then theory and practice. So we're just gonna go through each committee right now, give a little background, have the chair of the committee introduce themselves, and then give an update as to like what we've been working on, kind of how we're framing the development of that, that committee and what they're gonna kind of plans for the next year. And then also to get feedback from the participants and everybody on this call to kind of see, we'd love the feedback of, of how you want us to shape these committees, what we'd like to see in the future. And so with that, what an advocacy committee is led by Cassandra, who is not here. So Jessie's gonna kind of help us run through these slides.
Yeah. So one of the, so like Sierra said, Cassandra's been heading up the advocacy committee and she's been doing a lot of work there. And I know Laura mentioned she's gonna be joining advocacy committee as well. And lots of folks are interested in joining, so I think there will be some good like brain melding there about projects for the upcoming year that we can kind of contribute our advocacy to. But one of the first things that Cassandra and I were talking about was developing a more clear and, you know, community-developed mission, vision and value statement. So this is our current mission statement for NEMPN. And we wanted to present it to you all in the town hall just so that you could be aware of it and provide feedback on it and kind of help us to shape it in the future so that as we're kind of growing the community and rebranding and putting some more information out on the website that we're able to communicate this well. So yeah, the mission statement, "To engage museum professionals across all stages of their careers in building vibrant communities of networking, knowledge exchange and resource sharing." And then our vision statement, what we, how we see this community growing is that the National Emerging Museum Professionals Network envisions communities in which museum professionals make meaningful connections within and across backgrounds, disciplines and institutions by. And then what, what our vision for this is, is to provide leadership, responding to changing needs, enriching experiences, growing capabilities, sharing resources, advocating for the museum profession, connecting groups on a local and national level. So somewhat specific, somewhat broad, as, as a vision should be. But then where we kind of paused was in developing a value statement because this is something that we want the EMP community as a whole to develop, led by the advocacy community, so that there's some, you know, some direction to focus on, but we really want feedback here about what are the core values of this community? What core values do we want this community to have? What do we currently see as our, you know, our essential values? And so that is something we could maybe get feedback on right now or like at the end of the committee debrief. But that's just something we'd love for you all and especially like chapter leaders within your own communities to be thinking about what are the core values that we want to be representing. So yeah, what we'd love your feedback on is, what do you think of the mission and vision statement says they exist now? And then what you would like to contribute to advocacy committees' development of the core value statement? So we could open the floor. I don't know if that'll throw the flow off or anything, but if anyone has something to say, unmute yourself and chime in, please.
I guess, okay, so what does it say now? What do you think about the mission statement? What do you think of this statement advocacy? We can also move forward and kind of talk about some of the advocacy programs that we're working on now and then kind of loop back. It might give, I think, folks a little more perspective on really what the advocacy chapter does and, and how that fits into NEMP overall?
Yeah, think on it. Marinate. Um, yeah, so this is just our timeline of like, we'd like to develop this statement. The advocacy committee will put together a draft statement. We'll review it as a board. The board would seek feedback on that from the community at large and then we'll publish it to our website and to social media to kind of clearly communicate to our community and to folks not currently associated with this community, but who want to know what we stand for, what we stand for.
Yeah, so and currently, the, I would say, the advocacy committee, historically, our major advocacy project has been salary transparency. That was something that our previous president was very passionate about and had been working on for, gosh, like five or six years. And I think to the point where even though that's still an important conversation, I think the museum world has really broadened and moved away. I think also was a pretty successful thing. People are talking about salary transparency. It's almost a way more commonplace than it was five years ago. So what we kind of identified as a valuable kind of mission to take on for kind of moving forward in the EMP is an attention to unpaid internships and advocating for the death of unpaid internships. We kind of talked a lot to the EMP community and really see that as a systemic problem in the museum institution. So that's one of the kind of topics that we are gonna be moving forward on. We have been in some conversations with Museum Workers Speak, which is, if you're not familiar with them, absolutely check them out. They're another kind of museum advocacy community that is been very active during COVID in supporting and having a kind of a bailout fund for workers in the museum field who were laid off or furloughed. And I'd say that's like kind of the, the big advocacy journey we're going on right now. But, you know, I think it's important to note that we are a community organization. We're not top-down leadership. So, and that's really how we thrive, is that shared community that really values input and participation of all of our members. So, you know, I think, again, if there are kind of these advocacy goals that our members think is more noble for us to take on or ideas or you're getting all fired up thinking about it, that's great input that we'd like to hear back from as well. All right, death to unpaid internship is popular.
Yeah, and thanks, Madeline. Yeah, Madeline just shared Cassandra's emails so that if, you know, if you're sitting with this and you don't necessarily have something you want to throw out there right now, but you're like, you know, I actually found this great resource about unpaid internships or here's a value statement that I resonate with, then definitely send those along to us at a later time.
Yep, and I would add, I should have said this earlier, that our call to committee members, I think it just, did it just close, guys? I think it did. So we're gonna kind of introduce these new community members, committee members to our community in the upcoming new year. And then probably after some period of time, we might do an additional call. But even if you're not sitting on a committee, there is definitely still room for participation. And so yes, reach out, email, Facebook, anytime. I want to move to the next.
Um, yeah, so I am Emily, I'm the Director of Communications and I'm chairing the Communications Committee. So first, I do want to highlight where you can find us on various platforms and social media. So we're on Twitter. We launched our Instagram earlier this year and have seen a great increase in followers. You can find us on our Facebook page and our Facebook group, which is probably how you came to this. And I've also listed my email for communications at nationalempnetwork.org. So moving forward, one of the things that I really wanted to think about was how we're improving our communication strategy internally. So from our board and with our chapters and then externally, so how people are perceiving our organization from the outside. So internally, I think one of the things that we really want to emphasize is our, our space as a resource, right? So we have all these great conversations that are happening in our Facebook group. So making sure those conversations get documented, that we can have them and we get a lot of frequently asked questions so that those things are things that we can answer and that we can continue having those spaces. We also want to make sure that we're able to cross-promote the work of our chapters. We're not, we are a bottom-up organization. We're having all these things happening across the country and really internationally. And so there are so many great events and resources being put together and I want to make sure that those things are being passed from person to person. And then I also want to make sure that we're informing chapters of what our work of the board is doing, what these committees are doing. All of that information is getting out as a resource. And then externally, one thing that's really important is we want to engage people in our advocacy work. We want to make sure that organizations see who we are and that we're informing people broadly what our board does and what our chapters do. So the three things that I'm hoping the Communications Committee is gonna do is, one, work on revamping our website. So having a space for an active and reviewable job board, working with our Director of Resources, Michelle, on kind of easy, or making it easy to find all these resources and things that are being put together. And then updating our blog and being able to spotlight the work of individual EMPs as well as the work of our chapters. And then on social media, so we have long been on Facebook and Chloe and Laura do an amazing job there as our admins. So as we're moving on to Twitter and Instagram and these other platforms, making sure that we're also doing a good job of fostering community there. We're also putting together a policy so that we're able to cross-promote chapter events and chapter resources that are being put together. So if you're hosting an event, especially right now as we're all virtual and you might want to share it with other people, will be the space to be able to connect you with them. And then also putting together shareable graphic design resources for advocacy committee. So if you're having a sort of virtual meeting and you want a really basic graphic design resource, I want to have a space for that. If you're promoting a death-taught and paid internship sort of event in your chapter, let's have an image that you can use and make worth, make use of. Or if you are creating resources that you think other chapters can make use of, having all of those in our space so that people can make use of them. And yeah, so that we're ultimately serving as a resource. And then finally, we're also looking to kickstart our newsletters again in the new year. So we're gonna have about three newsletters. So one, and we'll talk about what family means in a little bit, but that'll be for chapters and chapter members. And that's really what we're happening, what's happening within our organization, what kind of news you need to get to. We'll have a broader community one that'll go out monthly and that's more of a dispatch, what's happening in our organization, but what's also happening within museum, the museum field as a whole. And then we'll also have a chapter leadership one that goes out quarterly to chapter leadership about any specific resources, any specific events and reminders of how to get their information out to the broader community. So in terms of feedback and things that we're looking for, our Communications Committee, we're still finalizing who's a part of that. But one, what do you want to be able to find on our website as we're redesigning? Where do you follow us on social media? And where are chapters looking on social media? And then for our newsletters, what content from us is most important for you? I'm sure if you're like me, you receive lots of newsletters on a weekly basis. And so what can we provide for you that maybe other people aren't providing?
Let's just move forward and everybody can think about their questions and we'll have an open discussion at the end.
Okay, I think it's me. I, this is Diane again, I'm the Chair of the Community Committee. I'm sorry, I didn't make slides partially because I can't set of slides again right now. And also partially because, um, I really, I didn't want to kind of outline exactly what the community committee is gonna be doing because I really want it to be a conversation that we all have and members of the committee have. So basically, what we're looking to do, as Sierra mentioned, with our new board, with the new regional director positions, we're really looking to kind of assess like who's out there? Like what EMP groups do we even have? Who's in them? What are you guys doing? Who needs help? What kind of support can we provide in terms of organizing events? You know, just connecting chapters with one another, social media? You know, like any kind of support that we can provide, we'd love to do that. But I think the initial thing is just gonna be figuring out like, who's even out there and what do you need? I know for me, and I'm sure this is all the regional directors, as I've been trying to like track down all the different groups within the Midwest, chapters are wildly different. Some are running like clockwork and they have tons of stuff going on. Some are like, are you even active anymore? Is like anyone doing anything with like this Facebook page or this website? So first thing is just gonna be saying, who's out there? What do you need? What can we do? And then that's when the Community Committee, gosh, Community Committee is like awkward to say. That's when we'll jump in and really start organizing like, okay, what can we do? What kind of resources can we share? Who's doing what? Let's not reinvent the wheel. If this chapter is doing something really great with their meetings and their elections, how can we spread that with everyone else? You know, those kinds of things. Yeah, and, and it, it'll hopefully be helpful for everyone. And I think it'll be nice to just connect because obviously there's so many chapters. I mean, even among our different regions, we're so different. And then within each of those, there's so many different chapters. Some are cities or counties, some are entire states. So yeah, we're really looking forward to getting to know all of you, what you're already doing and what we can help you with going forward. So just a lot of questions from my end, but hopefully as we kind of gather some data, we'll have some good answers and directions. And then that'll also, of course, be linked with things like the communications and advocacy, like how can we link up with those for local chapters to get involved in? So yeah, look out for more from us. I'm really excited that we got a bunch of applications for the Community Committee. And I'm sorry, I haven't had a chance to look at those. I'm sure we're all in the same spot of like, everyone's taking off the next two weeks. I'm like desperately trying to finish like a million things in the next couple of days. So if you applied, I will get back to you really soon about the committee.
Yay, Finance Committee! All right, will you just hit the next slide for me? I bet you guys all know what Finance Committee means. Okay, so we are trying to come up with ways to get them dollars, people, because we realize that it is important to have a little bit of money to work with if we're really going to
because we realize that it is important to have a little bit of money to work with if we're really going to fulfill our mission, vision, and values. If we're going to walk the walk, um, you know, we, we do see ourselves as community advocates and people that are hoping to, you know, h- hoping to encourage others to also walk that walk. So we can't be saying, you know, you need to pay your interns or you need to pay your presenters if we don't indeed pay our presenters, pay our interns. So we want to make sure that we, we do that. There's a couple of different ways that we're going to uh, look at fundraising. And uh, so I'll kind of go through those. One is board giving. I think it's really important just to let you all know that the board um, wants to be fully involved in supporting the mission of uh, any EMPN. And so that's kind of our, our starting place. And then also applying for grants because uh, we are a 501(c)(3) organization, and that gives us um, kind of a wide breadth of opportunity for um, granting organizations to help fund the things that are important to, to us all as um, the EMP community. And so that's where we're, we've got one grant that we've already applied for. We're, we're working and looking at other places to, to get more funding for um, things that need to be happening right now. As Ciara kind of mentioned, we chatted a little bit with Museum Workers Speak, and they're doing some excellent work there and have um, you know, funding that they're, they're really spreading across our community. And we want to, you know, kind of figure out how to, how to help do some of that as well. We also are looking uh, at how we can make donations, something that is uh, something that's more accessible for people to even know that they could donate to EMP. Um, so we're working with uh, the Communications Committee to get a donate button and things like that. So that, um, you know, whether somebody wants to donate a dollar for, you know, what we're trying to do, or, you know, some larger organization wants to, to donate more, that, that will be an opportunity for them. And then also fun stuff. So that is a variety of things. First is, we have talked about various merch, which we are hoping to um, work on. We've got some pretty talented artists on the board, but also um, we would love to at some point use dollars that we have fundraised to um, you know, seed that back into our NEMPN community and have them design fun, cool merch stuff. So pay them for designs that then can be used in this way. And then um, there's, there's a couple of other fun stuff things associated with uh, like small fees that we've been discussing too. So um, uh, we can get into that too, but like, you know, it would be like a, a fun membership. Like you would get coloring pages and, and other things like that, so almost mixed with subscription. That's a little bit further down the road because we don't um, you know, have that all sorted out or developed. But that's the kind of thing we'd be exploring as uh, the Finance Committee is kind of how interested are people in that? And uh, you know, how feasible is it to really accomplish that? And um, so the feedback that we want from you is kind of like what I just mentioned. What do you, what would you like us to do with the money that we fundraised first? You know, we, we are like, um, people have mentioned really interested in, in kind of attacking unpaid internships. But there are other elements that we know are, are things that EMPs are working on right now. Whether that's like, you know, you need a scholarship to attend some cool thing or to, to uh, even take a class that you wanted to take and haven't had the opportunity to do. We want to be able to use our fundraiser's dollars for things like that. And so we need your feedback on kind of different categories of funding that you think we should, we should be looking at trying to get money for. That'll be especially helpful when we start looking at uh, you know, grants and also uh, you know, maybe larger donations. And then uh, we also want to know that, as I mentioned about kind of our, our membership idea. So uh, you can see, we have big goals for the year. We really want to grow the organization and grow the impact. And we really would like to know if membership, if a membership that gives you access to kind of fun stuff, but wouldn't limit your access to that essential sort of grassroots information that comes from right now, the page, but would also be on the website and other things like that, um, if that's something that you're interested in. Or if it's, it's something that you'd really rather not um, have is, is good information. We, we want to make sure that we're responding to the community with that. So those are kind of the things we want to work on with the Finance Committee. And um, I believe we did get some applications for the Finance Committee as well, so I'll be going through those. And, and yeah, looking forward to working with all of you and hearing your feedback on that. My email is treasure@nationalEMPnetwork, so um, feel free to reach out or drop ideas in the chat as we move along. Thanks.
All right, um, I'll take over Theory and Practice since Michelle, who runs it, is not here. But um, for those of you who may know or may not know, Theory and Practice is a um, peer-reviewed journal, free to publish, free to read, that we, EMP is proud to partner with um, the museum. What is it called? Oh my God, it's on my next side. Go to my next slide. Oh, it's not even on there. Uh, okay, well, it's um, it's a journal that we um, both help promote in the sense of we want our EMPs to publish in this journal. Um, and we also have a committee that helps run the journal. So we're also looking for our um, editors, people who want to come on as peer review. Um, and that would be people who signed up on the Theory and Practice Committee. But again, with any of these committees, if anyone's dying to join, go ahead and send us an email. But yeah, so Theory and Practice, we just came, uh, released our call for submissions. And the uh, theme this year is "We, the Museum", and really looking at conversations about power and labor in the museum, which um, is a great conversation for uh, 2020, I think. So we want to spread that, spread the word about that. We're really hoping that we get a lot of submissions. It's a totally fabulous resource. Um, it's really special to, for uh, young and emerging museum professionals to have a place to publish their, their papers and their thoughts. And um, so keep an eye out for um, this call. We're gonna, I think, spread that to all the chapter leaders and really push that out as well. Yeah, thanks, Madeline, for putting that in the box. But yeah, we really just make everybody aware of that. Um, and then um, kind of coupled with that, we are hoping to do an event that would be on Zoom. And it would be basically a workshop on how to edit your paper and prepare your paper for submission. We know that um, for a lot of EMPs, they don't have any experience with submitting a paper, and it's um, sometimes a little more involved than just like what a paper in um, school would be like. So we are, we are still in the planning stage of this, but we are hoping to bring in an editor who will basically do a workshop over Zoom um, and help folks who want to submit, prepare for that and, and do their best to get their papers out and, and nice and, in good shape. So that's, uh, again, um, Theory and Practice is run by Michelle, who's been out. So um, it's, I don't have a whole lot of updates, but um...
Ciara, can I, can I jump in for one sec? So um, Kelsey and I, she's not here, but she's the Northeast Regional Director. We're putting together that workshop, and I mean, again, this is like the worst time of year to do anything, but we're hoping early in the new year, this can be a New Year's resolution to submit to a journal. So um, yeah, we're, we're figuring out an exact timing for um, the editor, who can give some tips and answer questions about um, what it's like to submit. And then we're also going to have some writing tips, so look out for that very early January, but not too early, so we can all have some time to, to recover from 2020 finally being over.
Yes, and go check out, you know, always helps to go read some past issues. Museum Scholar, which is in the chat box, um, has the, the previous issues in there. All right, all right, so I'll take on chapter updates as well. So um, like we said kind of early, and maybe just to give an overview, the National, we are run by the board. And who is talking right now? And then, um, but we do kind of tend to divide our membership into sub-chapters. Everybody is a member of the National EMP Network, but um, to kind of organize our membership and to be able to have localized events, our membership is divided up into chapters. Some of those chapters are city-based, some of them are county or region-based, some of them are entire states. Um, and some of them are not regional at all, but are divided up by maybe their museum educators or their um, subsidiaries of other groups that um, similar to um, how there are other museum organizations that have EMP chapters, but we wanted to kind of come up with a system that would still allow those groups, even though they're part of other, other organizations, to still participate in the National Emerging Museum Professionals Network. So what we came up with is this kind of three-tiered approach. The family membership is kind of the most straightforward, where the majority of our members will fall. And that is a membership, uh, chapter, it's really a chapter definition based on US chapters that are pretty much those regional chapters as we just discussed, and then are not affiliated with any other organization, so just affiliated with us. We wanted to expand that to the friend level, which is kind of that very similar, but will also include, it could include uh, EMP chapters that are also affiliated with other organizations. So think of that as uh, state organizations. Um, like I'm in New Orleans, so I'm part of the uh, Louisiana Association of Museums that also has an EMP chapter. There can be crossover there. Really wanted to be able to bring those groups in as well. And then we have a third group, which we're calling colleague. Right now, we might change it to ally. We're still trying to figure that out. Um, but that's going to expand beyond North America. That's all of our um, international chapters. It's um, can also include groups that have completely their own branding and their own um, management, really independent from us, but still kind of working towards the same goal. And we wanted to, a way to include them in the network as well, because if, again, we're looking at this as a community network, it's important to have all of those voices. So for individual members, that, that kind of chapter definition, those levels, doesn't really make a difference for our participants. It's really for, as we're bringing new chapters on or trying to kind of classify them, um, where those chapter leaders will fit. And a lot of that is based on the 501(c)(3) because we are allowed to be fiscal sponsors, but we cannot be for um, organizations that are financially committed to other organizations or um, EMP groups that are outside of North America and the US. So um, again, don't get too hung up on those. But what we are working on, um, that is going to be really accessible to all EMP members, regardless of if they're chapter leadership or where they live in the EMP ether world, are the regional directors. So everybody here has already introduced themselves, but I just wanted to go a little bit into detail of what that person represents. It's basically a contact for any EMP member to be able to approach the board with their specific needs or questions. We broke it up regionally, but we also have Michelle, who is our kind of overarching international. And then, um, gosh, Madeline, I didn't say Michelle, Madeline. Um, who is, is going to be that, that point person for if there's a group represented here that's not based in a city or a, a state. And any of those international groups like we talked about. The regional director is your point person. What the regional director is going to do beyond just being that contact person, they will also put on uh, one or two events a year. They will be cyber events, so probably on Zoom if we're not totally Zoom fatigued. And then a way to kind of build the, that regional network, but expand it. So have these partnerships between um, maybe like DC and Baltimore. They are close by cities within an hour, but technically in two different, two different EMP chapters, two different regions, actually. But the regional chair will be able to kind of facilitate conversation between these groups. Um, we are trying to start a chapter mentorship program, which will also kind of be um, not to use like a sorority analogy, but kind of a big and little, um, a chapter that can help basically partner with a, a chapter that's still kind of getting, getting on their feet and building their membership. And um, and kind of have a way, a, a per, a chapter leadership that's going to help mentor them through that process, help uh, build their membership, help get their events off the ground, and then also be able to do events together. So the regional director is going to kind of help with that program as well. Um, what else? Regional directors, you have anything else to add um, to your goals, dreams, et cetera? Good, good, good. All right. So what we're doing internally is, and this is going to be a little more relevant to the chapter leaders, but we wanted to be able to really formalize what an EMP chapter looks like. Um, we got a lot of feedback and questions at the last town hall of um, any kind of conversations that we've had. Is like, what does it mean to be EMP? How do you officially join? And um, like, what is that, what does that really look like? And what we wanted to do is formalize, form, formalize that. We, Jessie looked a little bit at the um, gosh, I'm very flustered today, guys, sorry. Um, basically getting some mandatory documents together. We're going to have an ethics statement. We're going to have a mission statement. We're going to have a DEA I statement. Something that's really going to formalize like what it means to sign on officially. And those will be those documents that we're going to ask the chapter leaders to sign. We're also putting together just some really kind of a how-to guide, how to get an official EMP email address, how to get branded social media, how to secure funding for your chapter, a number of those kind of questions that we get quite a lot, kind of that frequently asked questions. Um, we are also putting together a little guide that's going to really focus on the relationship to the chapter leaders and the overall board. So what kind of support does a chapter expect uh, to get from the EMP leadership? What can we offer these sub-chapters? So kind of, again, to kind of make this really solid identity for the group and all of these sub-chapters. And then lastly, also a little guide of how to start a brand-new chapter. There are a number of, of folks who are out there who are in cities that don't have their own chapter or they're kind of in rural areas and they want to make a, a chapter that's more broad, that's going to be more encompassing. Um, and so we're putting together a guide on that, on like how to do that officially. Also, how to revive a dead chapter, which um, there are a few out there or just some quiet ones. Oh, and let's see, um, so that's really it on chapters. I mean, in terms of um, questions for the group, I think uh, again, like what kind of support you're looking for as a, as a group, as a chapter? And um, if there's anything that feels too invasive for um, the national leadership to kind of push off onto chapters? And then vice versa, like kind of how much freedom you want, how much um, structure? I think that's something internally, we've been talking a lot about, like how much structure do we want to put on groups? Sometimes it's helpful to have some, but sometimes it's restrictive, so would love feedback on that. And that's, that's it for my chapters. All right, you guys want to take, um, Amy, you want to talk about your jam session?
I do. Um, for um, anyone who hasn't seen the announcements yet, um, we are going to be holding a jam session on December 22nd. And what we're going to be doing is talking about volunteer recruitment. So we're going to talk about um, what's going right, what's not working for you. And the goal is that everybody leaves with a couple of new ideas. And so basically, the format for that is you're going to hear from three people. It's really like, I want to call it like buckshot version. Um, so each speaker only has five minutes to tell you what's the most important thing they have to say to you about volunteer recruitment and how it's been successful for them. And then, a- and then we'll go into breakout rooms and we'll do jam boards together as well. So it's a very interactive session, and it's a really good opportunity to just hear from some people who've had some really great successes and what has worked for all of us, and then to really... and what has worked for all of us, and then to really talk it out with each other and figure out how we can make it flow. So it's exactly like going to a music jam session, right? Like what works, what doesn't, and how can we make it flow? So I hope that everybody will come, you can find, look perfect, Madeline is amazing. And in the chat, you have the link to that, so registration is required and the registration link is on the Facebook event page. So I hope everybody will come, it's, it's going to be a really great event. So I, I hope to see you there. And yes, Jessie is right, Madeline, it's a link here.
You want to talk about Skillshare?
All right, so our, so I don't know how many of you saw the form on our Facebook page, but we started kind of a program, I don't know what, what we're kind of calling it. But basically, we're just kind of trying to give EMPs an opportunity to share what they're good at or, you know, what kinds of skills they think other EMPs might also find useful. So you know, it's a way, I think, for, we think for EMPs to learn from each other. And also, we're trying to give EMPs opportunities to do programs and public speaking that maybe, you know, they haven't had yet, you know, so kind of, I think it's working in a number of different ways. And if you're interested in participating, that form is still up on our Facebook page, I believe. So basically, it's just like a Google form. So you can fill out, you know, your contact information, what's the skill that you want to share? And you get an opportunity to present on it. Right now, we have scheduled through about May, we're trying to do just one a month right now. It's possible we'll make that more frequent, depending on what we have going on. You know, I don't want to, I don't think we wanted to do too many events in one month, you know, you all have lives as well. So, and obviously, we all have jobs as well, too. So January is our first one, we wanted to start after the start of the new year. That first Skillshare is scheduled for January 11th right now. I think we're shooting for 12:00 PM Central Standard Time, like we were trying to shoot for like around lunchtime. It is a Monday, and that's going to be about, um, let's see. Um, conversational roadmapping about how to grow your membership. So if your museum has a membership program, especially right now during COVID, how to do that. Thanks, Jessie. Jessie just dropped that Google form in the chat for y'all. So you can also feel free to reach out to me directly and just kind of, if you want to back some ideas around or see what has already been submitted, if you don't want to do what somebody else has been doing or has signed up to do.
We're still getting organized with our finances, too, but it's not, it is not a volunteer presentation. You will get a small token honorarium for, for presenting.
Thanks, Chloe, that's an important detail that I did not mention.
All right, Diane, you talked a little bit about your writing workshop already, do you have anything to add?
Sorry, I jumped the gun, Sierra. There was one aspect I forgot to mention, which is that if you're interested, but maybe not ready to jump in yourself yet, we're hoping that with the session, we can also connect people if you want to be a reader for someone else. Or maybe you don't quite have an idea hashed out, but you want to co-write with someone else, so that'll be an opportunity, too. So whether you're, you're really raring to go with submitting for this round, or you kind of want to take a little bit of a backseat or like a side seat, is that a thing? That, that'll be an opportunity, too, so we, we can connect you all with one another as well.
Great. And the last thing on here is the Theory and Practice, which is really just that ongoing call for papers. And that is open till, I believe, February at some point. All right, so at this point, I think we had kind of a lot of questions that we threw at y'all. We also had a lot of questions come in as people were registering for this event. So I was just taking some notes, I was watching the chat box. I think COVID kind of came up as a conversation, if there are really anything that people are dying to ask, have a chat, let's just start it off. A few questions, great. How often are you going to cycle a new leadership to, into the committees? Have we decided that?
I don't think we've decided that yet, but the thought is that, yes, we will cycle the committees, because we want to make sure, just like all of the board appointments are, are termed. I think right now, we're all on basically just one-year terms, because we're trying to figure out our, you know, the interim thing before we finalize more, more of our policies and stuff in June, but with the option to renew. And so I think the, I think the committees, we want to be able to get enough done with them. Like especially in my case with the finance committee, we want to make sure that we, we have enough time to really get something rolling before we, we turn them over. But we want to make sure that everyone who's interested in participating gets to participate, because we really value all those ideas, so.
Yeah, I think that's an important note, is that we're all interim right now. So we're kind of doing this like one year to kind of get started and get organized. And there'll be some regrouping that happens again after that. All right, LinkedIn, we have a LinkedIn. I don't know who the link fairy is.
If I can find it. And then the other question that we skipped over to was, will these slide questions be presented to each respective committee? And yes, we will, this is kind of organizing them. And then as we get more committees and each of the different committee chairs sort of works it out, we will, we will probably come up with more questions as well to be added. Should we throw out some of the questions that came in from the, from the signing up? Okay, so the first one was, how can EMP chapters best keep up with supporting members during these times? Kind of a chapter one, throw it to you, Sierra?
Sure, um, you know, I think in all chapter communications, I think what we're really trying to do is have that regional director be the support network for chapters that need help in that, that realm. And then as we get our newsletter going, then any like chapter relation, chapter-related issue would also be disseminated to the larger group. In terms of like COVID support, I think what we can offer is, is that community resource, events, matching people, the job sport, of course. In, is, is this a question of overall, how to increase membership? I think that is something that the regional directors can help with, I think that's something the mentor chapters can help with. Overall communications, communication team on the national group can help kind of spread that information through the newsletters, through social media. So much of it is just spreading the word.
If any of you chapter leaders out there too want to chime in, what are you, what are y'all doing to support your members right now?
I could talk a little bit about that up in Canada, if everyone's okay with that. Hello, it's Madeline again, up here with no snow, shockingly, all of you who have snow. It was minus 20 here today, and it's just dead grass, it's very sad. With respect to how we are supporting members, to give just a little bit of context, the Group of Ontario Emerging Museum Professionals is essentially a group of people of approximately 1,400 Facebook members in a group at this point in time. And we have a committee of currently nine, and, oh gosh, Amy, yeah, cold but no snow. A committee of nine supporting people in our community. What we have done thus far is a number of things throughout 2020. At the moment, we just closed a second survey regarding COVID-19 conditions for EMPs in Ontario. And along with the first survey that we closed in the spring, those two data points are really going to help inform our ongoing work, two-pronged approach that we have going right now with respect to advocacy and professional development. In terms of PD, we have a number of things going on, including kind of like a Skillshare series called Museum DIY, kind of peer-to-peer EMPs, doing teaching for EMPs at home. And as well, an AMA series, Ask a Museum Professional Anything, where we have experts in our fields, we've had an interpretive planner, an exhibition designer. And in January 2021, we'll have a conservator answering questions through a variety of mediums for EMPs. And that has been extremely well-attended. We also did a trivia night in partnership with our provincial museum organization, and that was a big hit. We even had a, I think it was a themed round for pandemics or plagues and stuff, and it was actually hilarious. So it sounds like it wouldn't be a touchy subject, but it was awesome. So I think really for us is offering those lighthearted things, offering some solid professional development, and then continuing to advocate, for us at least, both at provincial and national levels, has been very important for, for our community. And we're looking forward to rolling into 2021 with some new projects, but also keeping those ones going that have been quite successful in 2020, despite all the crazy things that are going on. So yeah, that's a little, a little bit of a justice to what we're doing up here.
Madeline, do you save some, like your Ask Me Anything conversations? Because those sound like ones that would be interesting to share with some of the national group, really.
Absolutely, we're lucky that because we partnered with the Ontario Museum Association, and we run on zero funds, so we kind of piggyback on their Zoom so that they record the sessions and then upload them onto YouTube. So I will pop those into the chat, and anybody who's interested as well, if you missed the links, just email me at international@nationalEMPnetwork.org, and I can forward them. But along with all the resources that we're getting together, I'll definitely make those available to the rest of the board so that we can get those onto some pages that will be accessible to the entire EMPN community. I guess, I'm, I'm co-host of them, and I don't know, it's always weird watching myself on camera afterwards. So I won't join you in watching those, but you're more than welcome to watch them on your own time. It's definitely a wonderful way to create mentorship opportunities, because so much of mentorship is about connecting with a person, and so much of that has been done previously in person. So we're trying to make it happen from home to home, so that people can continue to stay safe.
So good, thank you, Madeline. And then the next one's about volunteers, so what is everyone doing with their volunteers right now? We mentioned the volunteer jam session, so if you're looking at recruiting and you want some other ideas, hop onto that jam session with Amy, it will be, it sounds like it's going to be really fun. And, but then, yeah, give us, give us your thoughts, what is everyone doing volunteers right now?
I am, I'll, I'll start, I mean, so, you know, my, my situation is, is interesting. Nearly before the pandemic, all but two of my volunteers were over the age of 65, which is not uncommon in museums, and then I had two volunteers under the age of 16, because their dad works for us. But, so after the pandemic started, a number of my volunteers are not computer comfortable. And so one of the big things that I did was I started recruiting high school students. And I've wanted for a really long time to have a high school ambassador program, where in a non-pandemic universe, they would be taught how to run, I work in a science museum, so they would be taught how to run hands-on science demonstrations and activities. And they would basically run our, call it like the Astro Van, right? So like science man, and those kids would do all of that at school, and they would, and the, the school would just keep everything there. And so I started with those kids, and they've been making videos. And so they're working on that right now, and so I've been keeping my volunteer program going in that way. But I have had, I always offer the opportunity to all of my volunteers, they write the newsletters that we send out, and they're running our star parties. And the other thing I just did for them was I, I know there's not a lot of science museum people on here, but there's a platform out there called SLU, which is how you run telescopes in other countries. And so starting to teach all of my volunteers how to run telescopes, which most of them have never done before, so that they can run star parties as well, and it's actually bringing them back in and re-engaging them. And so that's been a pretty exciting thing to be able to work on, and it's really re-engaging that force, even though they've been really stuck, you know, stuck at home and really not able to, to do anything, because they're the most at-risk population, so that's been pretty cool.
I can add a little bit about volunteers, so in New Orleans, I run the New Orleans EMP chapter. And we have had, obviously during COVID, a lot of museums shut their doors, closed down for a while, a lot of furloughed employees. And what I organized actually was an EMP volunteer support group that would go into kind of these community centers that had collections or had archives or had objects, but didn't have any museum expertise, and basically bring the museum worker to them. Obviously, this was all volunteer, we're a volunteer group, it wasn't, these weren't people that I could pay. So in terms of support, financially was not available. But I think it ended up being a nice opportunity to kind of get people who are out of work busy and contributing to the community and offering museum services to people that didn't have any, taking COVID precautions. So we actually were working on this woman's front porch in groups of twos, a bit strange. But that's been a nice kind of volunteer activity that we've done, really with our EMPs.
We do this thing called Museum Club, which is an online virtual thing right now, but it, it was in-person before. And we kind of, it's like, it's a speaker series, but it's kind of based off of like a more interactive sort of book club. Sort of everyone gets to like ask questions and stuff like that. And so we, something valuable that I kind of took away from a conference that I went to before the pandemic was that, like, it's good to be mission-focused with what your museum is doing, but you don't necessarily always have to be like laser-focused on exactly what your mission is. You know, like your, your museum or your place of work serves, you know, whole human beings. And so it's okay if you do fun things, and it's okay if you do things that are not, you know, specifically related to astrophysics, if, you know, that's what you're doing over in Arizona. Or, you know, you can do something that's kind of like, you know, is just still within that realm of like the people you're trying to serve. And so with Museum Club, we, we often have people, my, my museum is kind of like a cross-history-science museum. But we, we often have people that are just like from, from different, that have some sort of connection to Idaho that will come and talk, that our volunteers like really love to participate in. That's our, our largest base of, of people that come right now. And so like for some examples, we, Rachel Martin from NPR is actually from my city of Idaho Falls. And so we had her talk on Zoom, and we've had public health professionals and just like people who are, you know, just that, that, things that are topical, that people have questions about. So yeah, it's not quite as laser-focused as I sometimes am in, in my other programs, but it's a, it's a fun thing to do with them, and they have continued to be somewhat engaged because they're able to attend those, at least the ones that are computer savvy.
I think, I think that's great, and, and I love that you said astrophysics, like you were, I feel attacked.
I was attacking you, maybe.
I think, I think it's so good, you know, pre-pandemic, what we used to do was trade field trips. I think, I think it's so good. You know, pre-pandemic, um, what we used to do was trade field trips. So, um, it's like the Tumaco Creek, uh, National Monument is not that far from our observatory. And the Two Back Presidio Park, which is a history museum complex, is not that far away. So we would trade, um, field trips with their volunteers. Um, and, and really give my volunteers that opportunity to experience like, here's everything that this community is about. And so we did a lot of that. And the other thing I've been working to do, um, but has not, hasn't taken flight yet, is I surveyed my volunteers, um, I think in like May, and I said, what can I do to support you? What is it you want from me, um, that I can actually do when, when I can't see you? And about half of them said they wanted to learn Spanish. So I've been trying to sort out how to get a class together so that my volunteers are together learning Spanish. And, and giving them that opportunity. And so, uh, trying to just figuring out, how do I do that? And what's the best way to do that? And how, how can I make it as, as accessible to them as possible? So, um, that'll be another thing they do. But I think in terms of maintaining them, by the way, so before this event tonight, I was sitting on my living room floor, continuing to, I don't know if you guys have ever seen those projects where you like transfer a photo to a wood slice with Mod Podge and it takes like, you know, 40 minutes to do one of them. And I have 63 volunteers. Okay? So you can imagine like sitting on my floor, like dipping these things in water, going like, rub the paper up. And Friday I'm being Santa Claus, right? So I will drop one of these off on every single doorstep and, um, for all of them, except the one in Maine. If someone wants to do that, I'll mail it to you. Um, but, uh, so I've been really careful about maintaining them as people. So exactly what you're saying, Chloe, like remembering that they are people. So I've spent a lot of time handwriting postcards, um, in the pandemic and making phone calls and being really, really careful about making sure I sent birthday cards on time. And, and I'm sure everyone saw there was an article out today that said, oh, you don't have to actually send those holiday cards. Nobody cares. And I'm like, but my volunteers do care. I had a huge problem with that article that came out today because I do know all of them personally and they do care that I do that for them. And it's very important, um, to maintain, um, to maintain those relationships, even if they can't do anything. Um, so, you know, if, if this is a time where they're not able to serve, I'm making sure that they know I remember them and I miss them. And that is equally as important in, in this time period.
So for us, we, um, have a junior executive board, which is made up of people aged 25 to 40. And they, you know, give their time and expertise for different things that, we need help on to help, uh, target that demographic. And typically we have a holiday party, which they really enjoy because they get to come, they get free food, they get free beer, free wine. And, you know, we talk and we laugh, we have a good time. While because of COVID, you know, we're not doing any in-person gatherings of that nature. So, um, I decided instead, you know, that we have to figure out a way to still kind of bring that fun element, uh, for them and to thank them for what they do, um, for us throughout the whole year. So we devised having, um, a signature cocktail mocktail contest, um, for the board. And they were able to submit, um, their recipe, uh, to me, which then I created, you know, a spreadsheet. And everybody, uh, got the spreadsheet and they all got to vote on which cocktail they thought would be the yummiest to try. Um, and so we then, uh, tallied it up and we had a winner. And so we got to announce the winner during that, during that, uh, holiday, uh, meeting. And we also did something that we've never done for that board before, which was we actually gave them, each, each of them a, a gift from our museum shop, just for sticking with us through this pandemic and all these changes that we've had to do. And so we decided to give each of them a really nice, um, like handcrafted paperweight made by one of our regional artists. And so they all got one of those as a gift this year. Um, and then, you know, we got to, um, introduce some of the new members that are coming on board next year. And we just, you know, were able to kind of get together and talk and, you know, not necessarily talk about museum stuff and just kind of hang out in a, in a virtual space.
So creative. Okay. In the interest of time, I'm going to go through a couple of these. So one of them is, uh, how does NMPN plan to support leaders in state and city chapters? More information on that will be coming in the, um, chapter guidelines that we're putting together. We have, we have spent quite a bit of time trying to think this through. Um, and so Sierra, anything quick you want to throw out at that before we keep going?
Okay, only that if, if there is a specific chapter leader that's having some issues, get in contact with us.
And then a couple of the questions were about, um, that you applied to be on a committee and when will you hear back? Soon is the answer. Uh, we, we really, really are grateful for you applying to be on the committees and, um, we will be reaching out. So, uh, keep, keep checking your emails. Uh, we are, we are hoping to have, um, have at least touched base with everyone, um, before the end of the year. Okay. And then there was, um, a couple of questions that are about, um, like job advice. Or, uh, so, so one is about searching for jobs. And then the other one is about, um, uh, being a grad student graduating in 2022, um, and then, uh, wanting to, let's see, any recommendations regarding professional trajectories or academic museum outlook or forecast for the future? So anyone can feel free to jump in on this. But I will say, we have some good resources, um, that taught, that speak to that on our Facebook page right now. So if you are a member of Facebook, um, I know that not everyone is, so it's not a great resource for everybody. But there are some good, there is some good information there. And if you want to ask that question on Facebook and you're able to, that's definitely something that, you know, Laura and I regularly approve those questions. Did anyone, anyone want to jump in on that with super quick wisdom comment, comments about job searching right now?
Well, I can be sort of helpful. And you know, the, the one big thing is, so I'm going to put every board member here on the spot. You guys can email every board member and ask, uh, if, if we know if there are jobs out there. And, you know, I pay really close attention in Arizona, for example, because I live here. And so whenever I hear about a job in Arizona, I'm posting it and I post it everywhere. And, um, you know, sometimes we know things that aren't posted yet. You know, for example, you know, I know about a couple of jobs that aren't posted yet. And so if there's somebody out there who needs a job, a lot of people in Arizona know that they can call me to ask me questions. Or, you know, just know that they can come to me because I'm in the know, um, on stuff like that. And I think that, I think as a board, you know, we're trying to become that resource for you. And we're the place, we want you to be able to come and ask questions. And, and so, you know, I know right now, if there's anyone out there who's a rock star at being a volunteer coordinator, you know, uh, the Tawana Chul Botanical Gardens in Arizona just posted a job. So, you know, that just happened and they're growing pretty rapidly despite the pandemic. They have a very bright future ahead of them and they're looking forward to the end of the pandemic. They've posted five brand new jobs in the last few months. And so they're, they're really on a, a growth trajectory. And so I think that one of the things is being open. So someone like me, uh, if I, if I needed to get a new job, I would need to be open to moving. Um, because this is it. My, my wagon is hitched to an astronomy star. That sounds funny. My wagon's actually hitched to an actual star. Um, and, uh, so Chloe's laughing at me, but it's always going to be like that. But so, you know, for me, you know, you have to sort of think about when you're doing a job search, what are you open to? And, and were you really open to going or learning? And know too, that we're a resource because there, there are other ways to look at it. You may not start your career in a museum. I did not start my museum career in a museum. I started my museum career working for the state government in the state historic preservation office. So it was a totally different, uh, way to start aligning myself with the industry and really get in at the ground level. I have a friend who's, who I wish was here tonight, who could tell you that he got his job through the National Guard. Um, and he runs a military history museum. But, but so these jobs exist in some very strange places. Occasionally, and we just said, uh, Heidi Shurek just said, you know, Arianna Yandel out there. First I'm going to say, Arianna, I am mailing my Christmas card, I swear. It's going to get mailed tomorrow. She just texted me today and said, don't forget. So I am going to mail it, uh, the desert, desert. But, um, you know, so there are a lot of people out there who are great resources who can tell you, look in weird places. And we have a board member who works at a university, right? So I work for technically a university, you know, Harvard and the Smithsonian own this strange small museum. Be willing to look in different places. Get on like USAjobs.gov and Google Museum or Curator or something. And, and look in all these different weird places because jobs are out there. And a lot of times, and I'm sorry, I'm like going overtime and Sierra's like giving me the look. I can see it. But, um, the, the really interesting thing, especially, um, with government jobs is that they often go unfilled for a very long time. Because all of these very competent, wonderful professionals are not looking at the government as a potential source for a museum job or for a preservation job. And so it's really important to be open to that and look in these like weird places you wouldn't expect to find a job like that. Because they're there and they need you.
So I think Sam, right, was going to hop in?
Hey, yeah, it's me. Um, so I wanted to pop in really quickly as far as looking for jobs. So I used to work at the Arizona Commission for the Arts. And everywhere has one of these, speaking of like government kind of things. They are aware of like all of the arts, not just arts, arts and culture. So, um, I know in Arizona, it's like Arizona Science Center, Pablo Grand. Um, I've lived downtown, so I'm pretty much in this area. But pretty much every city has one of these like arts and culture, um, foundations. And they usually have job websites. So I know there's one in Austin that I've looked at. I know there's one in Chicago. So a lot of the time you can look at like what kind of like organization or what kind of like funding is going into the museums and what they're affiliated with. So like most places are affiliated with Arizona Commission on the Arts. They will have a lot, a lot, a lot of job recommendations. And I know right now there's more than there were a couple of months ago. I actually just started with my position, that's my dog, I'm sorry. My position with Scottsdale Arts, um, which was a godsend. And especially in these interesting and learning times. That's, yeah, that was just my little two cents.
Thank you. Um, I, I want, I just wanted to add, like, I think that jobs is obviously something that like comes up a lot for EMPs. I think it's kind of probably the number one thing that EMPs need help with. And, um, I kind of thought that that could be a good segue to like wrap up this conversation with, and the ending question of, I think we are looking for like trying to kind of come up with our future goals and dreams and plans for 2021. And, um, what are going to be the most valuable resources for us to put our energy into? The most valuable questions and needs and conversations that EMPs are having. I think jobs, COVID, um, definitely some topics that are coming up a lot. And would that be helpful to have this kind of conversation as a guide, how to look for a job? Or is it helpful to have more of a workshop, how to get your resume together? Not asking that specific question right now, but, um, asking for kind of that general, what are you looking for from us? From what can we accomplish next year that would be really helpful for the EMPs out there?
And I'll just say too, there was another big question that was posed to us, which is, just fits right in with what Sierra was talking about, which is one that's not easy to answer quickly. And, and, you know, we don't necessarily have time for it tonight, but one that we do want to explore. And that was, um, how does EMP hold museums that are known to be racist accountable? And what changes can EMP work towards enacting within these spaces publicly? So that's definitely something we're going to be looking at working more on. And Cassandra will have a lot more information on that with advocacy committee and, and everyone else who's on the advocacy committee. So we're looking forward to hearing your ideas on that. And we are, we are not afraid to hold people accountable. You know, that is, that is, we want, we want to serve our community and that's what we're here to do. So that, you know, you don't necessarily have to put your own individual neck on the line, you know, trying to support yourself or your family. And, and say these, say these things to institutions that have a problem, you know, across the board. So.
Yes. And I see in the chat, uh, D A Is, um, one that we're looking at kind of coming up with a overall statement that EMPs can use and the chapters can use, but, um, also resources to help EMPs bring that into their own communities, their own museums. And Cassandra has a passion. All right. So I think, um, just in time, we're going to wrap it up because it's been an hour and a half. But, uh, to reiterate our email addresses, if you are in these chats, it's also in on our website. We want to be really available. We're going to be reaching out with the, um, committee, new committee members and introducing them fairly soon. And, um, again, we're, we're going to post this. I think we want everybody to kind of think over the questions. Get back in touch with us if you have thoughts, if you have questions, if you need help, if you want us to tackle some big topics, let us know. And, uh, I don't know, anybody have any final thoughts? Nope. All right. Well, with that, oh.
Happy holidays. We love you. We support you. Good riddance, 2020.